Called this meeting, Council of Order, December 3rd, 2019, 7:00 PM. Are there any additions to the agenda?
I want a 10-minute executive session.
Non-elect?
No motion in a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Any other additions to the agenda?
Mayor, can I get a five-minute executive session, too?
Non-elect for yours as well?
Correct.
Any other additions? Okay.
We assumed we had to second that one.
Yes, I guess. Okay. I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move a city superintendent and public work supervisor up to the head of the agenda this evening. Jeff?
The only thing I've got is that we're trying to get the work done on the wellhouse. The weather's nice this week. Get our Christmas stuff up, we'll get back on it. We've got a couple days left to finish it. Other than that, just normal stuff. I mean, we really don't have anything exciting going on, so.
Everybody have any questions for Jeff?
Are they all done with the sewer stuff?
Yes, they are. I assume that probably in the next week or two, we'll get probably the results of what they found and probably any kind of recommendations that they've seen. I imagine we'll go over with them. I don't know. I've never been through this process before. We kind of know what we're looking for. We did find some things. Dave will enlighten you on some of that, but, you know, I think it was probably well worth the money for some things that we found. We're glad we did. We'd like to make it an annual deal on a quarter of the town, maybe, if we can afford it, and see that, you know, that we don't have any more problems anywhere else. Had a boring machine hit a line about nine months ago, and we found the results of it when they rotted down on First Street. So, we ran quite a few million gallons of water out, and if it hadn't have been for the camera, we probably wouldn't have found it till it sunk in, so. Anyway, David will tell you a little more about that. He was kind of more involved with that than I was, so. Other than that, I really don't have anything.
Everybody have any questions for Jeff? Okay. Public Works Supervisor, David?
Street signs came in. They're down at the power plant. Back to what Jeff was referring to. Camera crew called me and Jason over there to look at the TV or whatever. When they came upon it, they sat there 15 minutes and the water was like turned on hydrant. They marked it for us, we came back, we heard water in an old can. And I called the emergency locate and just barely touched ground and there's a hole. Jamie kind of, I don't know if she took pictures or...
I updated them last meeting.
You know, it could have been pretty bad, and plus that guy drives in his front yard. So if he would have been there 10 feet to the north, the car probably would have been down in it, because it was only about four inches of dirt on top. But, I mean, it was running, it was a one-inch service line and it was running the whole entire time.
I'm assuming there's no meter hooked to that?
No, no. That building is served by the east side of the house, not from the north, so. Until it sunk, we'd have never seen it. You know, we don't have any idea how many million gallons. We know it's been quite a few. One-inch line will blow about 60 gallons a minute, so. And it was right smack dab through the middle of it, in the copper line, so. And Ryan can tell you from some of the episodes they've had, too, that's not the first place they hit. You know, it scares me to death every time we bring a boring crew to town, because unless you're familiar with the work that the guys do, and they know how the machine works, they're not just slamming pipe and going as fast as they can go, like, you know, a good operator could probably have felt it if he'd have been paying attention, but these guys, they were in it for the money. Was by the foot, get it done and get gone, and, you know, of course, as dry as it was, it went down for a long time, went straight into the sewer. It was close enough that it clipped a drain line, an old drain line off of there, and it was just feeding it right straight in, so. You know, we don't have any idea how many millions of gallons, but it was several. So, you know, that'll screw up our water usage for the year, and it'll be a loss that we'll have to write down, so. But it's just things like that, that you don't, you don't know what you're getting into until you do something like that, so. You know, when we picked those, when we picked that 10,000 feet, we picked mainly mainline stuff, because we knew that the short lines, we have very little trouble with. Usually it comes from, you know, like that six-street line by the school, we've had a lot of problems there. Had a lot of sand in the First Street line, and that's half the reason I wanted to do it. So, you know, if we can, if we can pick out a few thousand feet and get it done at a good price, and maybe quarter the town at least one time, and do all four sections, why? We think it's probably worth the money we'd spend, and we'll get to look at all the pipe. I'm anxious to look at some of these. I know we've got some problems, so. Sooner we see them, the sooner we can try and figure out a way to take care of them, so, anyway.
I assume, I assume, is that sand in the First Street line you're talking about probably came from that water leak fishing in the main?
Part of it did, but we've had that problem there for years, sand with it, but for a long time, part of those manholes had holes in them, you know, and just the street sand and the water from rain and stuff like that washing in there. And, you know, in the past, we had a car washed down there for years, and, well, two of them, one on each end, and, you know, if they don't clean those pits out, and that starts building up in there, then it pulls it right down. And that's a main line coming from the fold, from the east side of town, going clear through down to almost West Street, and then it turns and goes north, so it carries a lot of water. And so I think, I think the outcome from that is going to be that they probably picked in. Of course, they've act everything that they did, so we don't really have any idea how much they did pull out, and they probably don't either. They just sucked it up as fast as they washed it, so. But one thing's for sure, we probably got, we probably got 10 years of use out of it without having to wash it like that again, I mean, by cleaning it out, so. I think it was advantageous to do it, so, anyway. I mean, I'm interested to see it. I think, I think we're going to see some results that, you know, will kind of give us an idea. Old taps, stuff like that, I mean, that's, that's how you find them, so, anyway.
Okay. Everybody have any questions for David?
David, do we have any timeline on those such street signs?
I think we're going to start, I don't know what Jeff's plan is, start trimming trees and stuff. I would say probably shortly after that.
I'm going to guess sometime first of the year, probably. Maybe shortly after. I want to get started on these trees as soon as we get the Christmas stuff done, so that we can have everything cleared out, and the mayor would ask about some alleys, too, and I want to try and straighten some alleys up while we're doing that. Take part of the footage back that's overgrown into some of those alleys, get them cleaned up, and then once we do that, then I think we'll aim full force at setting those signs and get them done. We'll just get some guys out and get to setting it, and some guys behind and putting them together, and we'll get them done in pretty good fashion, so. But the trees, the trees concern me, I want to get them done first, so.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Public Cattily Supervisor, Jason?
No, Jeff took care of everything I was going to mention.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, I understand you have a... Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a question for Jason. I had several people ask me that light on First Street and left stations, that something they'll be alarmed about or something.
Well, we're, yeah, we're getting a gentleman that was supposed to be getting us a pump found, and so what we're just going to have to do is pull that pump and just get it sent in, and that's what we're looking at there.
We replaced one of them before the grocery store went down. Those pumps that were originally out there were really small, and we put a, I think it was a three-horse pump back in, didn't we, Jase?
Yeah.
Was it a three-horse pump we put back in there? Pumped about, pumped about 80 gallon a minute compared to 26. We figured the extra flow, it would help those. Those pumps have been in there for 25 years, and I put the first one in. We bought the first one, and I was going to turn around and buy the second one, and I called the company I bought it from, and they quit handling them. The pumps are made in England, and we can't find, and it was a great price, and that might have been the reason we only got one bought. They're about a $4,000 pump, I bought it for $1,800 bucks, so. We're going to pull this second one out. There are some alternatives. There's fittings that have to go on, and it slides on stainless rods to go down and lock in, so we want, we're hoping we can get out there this week, get that second one pulled out, and, and try and get it in somewhere and get it going through, and at the same time, try and figure if we can adapt another pump to that style, so that it'll go back in, and maybe it won't be quite so hard to find a pump. We've got a supplier in Salina, we can get one from, we think, so. Anyway, that's kind of where we're at, but it shut that pump down, that's the reason it did that, so. Or it's overfull, that's the reason that light comes on, so, anyway. It's a warning before it drowns you if you get there quick enough, so, anyway. That wet well's 19 feet deep, 20 feet deep. If it gets much more than about three foot of water in it, that light will come on if the pump can't keep up with it, so. Sometimes it gets too full, and it takes a little bit to pump it down, that's the reason, but it won't reset itself. You have to manually reset it once it comes on, so.
Somebody has to see...
We're running off of one pump right now, is that right?
Right now, yeah. Yeah, we are, so. And we don't really have the flow out there. If it was a pump at Cherry Lane, it would really concern me. You know, we pump a lot of water through that one, probably five times what we pump out there, but, yeah, it needs to be come out. As soon as this gets done, we get the Christmas stuff done, it's coming out, and we're going to go through it, so. Put it on the bench and figure out what's going on. Maybe, may just be plugged up, you know? Could be something in the impeller, burying in the impeller or something like that, so. That's, that's the plan, anyway, so.
Any other questions?
If you don't mind, I'd like to be excused to go to a program, if that's, unless you need me for anything else.
That's why I moved you up, so. Gentlemen need to, go ahead and leave, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think they're talking to all of you.
Yeah.
All, yeah, it's all three, I understood you had...
Go ahead and tell them.
I didn't hear.
I can talk over them.
My kids are saying that. Oh.
I didn't see the papers.
Unless you want to stay, it doesn't matter.
Well, it doesn't matter. I was, the eyes, I sat there and pulled a, pulled the ligament out, or tendon out of my shoulder, and I kind of got it fixed, so I'll be out just for a little while. I gotta, they wanted me out two weeks, I couldn't be that long, so I told them I'd be out till Friday, or Sunday, and I'll be back light duty for just a little while, so.
We'll keep him busy.
And while he's on light duty, I thought maybe have an important bitches on the grid and we're just not moving him at all.
If I don't get it fixed, I'm going to use some of this little muscle right here, and I can't go over 40 pounds, or I'd take the chance of ripping that one off, and then I just, so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night. Okay. Moving up, back to citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments this evening?
Well, this is a good time. Yes, I just wanted to introduce myself to the council, Sid Arpin, and reintroduce myself to the council. We, I'm with BG Consultants, and we had developed some cost estimates for the safe house to school plan that was tied in with the USD, and it was funded through KDOT, and there was a time-sensitive thing, and they wanted to close it out, so we had submitted a final invoice, and we just wanted to let you know that that was for that, but there's also an application for a Phase Two that's included with that, and they have a window for that, so the next window that comes up, probably next fall, and we'll be back talking with you to entertain what you might be, you know, wanting to take a look at for a KDOT-funded, safe house sidewalk improvement, based off of the information that we've already generated. We compare it to wherever you, you see as a fit for the community, and then if you desire to make an application, and we'll be glad to assist you with that, so. And in the meantime, it's around the Christmas season, and we had some gifts, so I brought cooler, you know, winter time coolers, I guess they go together, and some pretzels for you, so. Y'all have a good holiday season, and good meeting y'all. Thank you very much.
All right. Any, any other assistance comments? Okay. Moving on to consent agenda. Approved minutes, regular council meeting, November 19th, 2019. A motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance 12-3-19, the amount of $44,837.41.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Is he in a hurry?
Who's in a hurry here?
Choo choo choo. Get out of here.
We only have a couple meetings left, we're going to grab this out.
Make a best lead, be rid of me.
Okay. We're with Grant Administration, we got anything from Lisa?
I think I sent the link in the email, or I printed it off, I guess I did send it. So that is what she had sent for you guys to look at. She didn't really give me much more information on that. I think she ended up being busy with the program tonight, too, so if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to relay them and get answers. The city was awarded today a check for $36,040 for the playground equipment at Brown Park, so the city's portion of that is taking out the old equipment and getting the ground ready, so it's a great opportunity that...
How much is it that I guess was, is it basically all of it, from like all the wood equipment to the...
We're going to take out the wood, the wood equipment.
Basically that whole area?
So.
Pretty good deal.
That'll be really good.
So, I mean, we borrowed, so we use that money to buy the playground equipment, or that's already, there's a playground picked out already?
Yeah, so in the beginning of all of this, Laura Davis actually volunteered to start the process, and then it kind of fell through the cracks, and it popped into my head a couple months ago, and I had asked her about it, and Lisa picked up the pieces. Laura needed to step back from, from the project, so Lisa picked it up and finished it for us, so that was really nice. I really didn't have much to do with it, other than answering Laura's questions when she had it, and helping Lisa out these last, which she, so really, it was Laura, I think, doing most of the legwork, but...
Right. Anybody have any questions that...
I'm going to tell Laura thanks on behalf of council for starting that for us.
Any other questions, comments?
Apologize for not making it, I was, I left town at midnight and never got back, so.
Yeah. It was kind of a last one, it is. I tried to, I tried to get it set and stung last week, and I was kind of hoping they could come to the meeting, but that obviously didn't work out. And when I asked Lisa about it again yesterday, she said she told me today, so.
I guess, we're on, the, since I missed the last meeting, so Lisa's working on now for that truck parking out there?
She's looking into options for the truck parking.
Well, I guess while we're on that issue, did you ever do anything with the lease for that ground out there, like, is there wheat planted out there, or we're going to be dealing with weeds next year?
Yeah, it's ours.
Pretty much.
Okay. There's nothing we can do about it, right? Can't plant anything now?
No, it does, right.
And I think even in the spring, I don't know what you could plant, but it's supposed to be kind of wheat, keep that shit off of there.
When do they plant corn?
Can't plant corn out there.
Huh?
Can't plant corn out there.
I don't know anything. I just didn't, we're going to be dealing with weeds. So, I mean, we'll just drop it, then just deal with it till next year?
All right. Okay, moving on. Chief Adams?
Oh, just a couple things. Torres graduation's December 20th. I believe it's at 1 o'clock, so if anybody's wanting to go, it'd be great, we'll try and get up there for her graduation, so. Not coming soon enough. Department Christmas party, I'm going to try to have a department Christmas party, so I wanted to invite council, if you wanted to stop in, make an appearance. I don't know a date yet. It's not going to be a big one. I just have some stuff for the officers and things, so I just thought we'd have a dinner, and they could have their families, and we just kind of have our own deal, so you guys are invited just to stop by. It's not going to be anything long, less than an hour up there, but we're going to try to get that done. Show booth this Sunday. We adopted a, about 20 soldiers out of Fort Riley, so we're going to be signing a flag and getting stuff together for care packages, to get those out next week to the soldiers deployed right now, so that's coming up Sunday, so if you guys get a chance, stop by the Dillon's Building and sign the flag, if you would, please. Dog training, dog training went well. It was a long two weeks, the guy worked us, but we do have a really good dog. Environmental issues, you'll get over, it's just working in a new area. When it's time to work, he works, it's that off time, new things just kind of, kind of make him stick right by my side and won't go out. We did a little training today, which brings me to the next thing. We got to have industry standard is 16 hours a month minimum training for K9. That's everything. And that's not going anywhere. That's training here, that's me on duty, setting our stuff, doing things, just doing my, like, today I went down to the baseball field, we did some tracking, did some article search, stuff like that. An hour here, hour there, you know, and that's kind of what we base the industry standard to, 16 hours a month. We haven't been on any narcotic odor since we left Texas. I have my pharmaceutical license in, I'm waiting to get it back so that I can get to KHP and pick up my training aids and get back here, so until we get that, maybe it'll be in this week, I hope. I'll probably be going to Great Bend Friday night, I'm off Friday night, so I'll take that night to go up to Great Bend and train with their K9. That way we can get some dope work and stuff like that, and get on some odor, because I'm just telling you that on, all of this training, when there's a time lapse in between the training, and when you use them, you lose a lot, so it's imperative that you keep it, and we got a great opportunity with the dog, but we have to keep it up, and that's my job, is to keep it up and keep going and keep working. So the next thing I'm going to see, it's over my spending, is a bite suit. It's $1,480 for a bite suit. I just got to find somebody who's willing to wear it, so that I know what size to get, but I need to see. We're kind of struggling, running into some deals with, with some other departments that I haven't got their, their funding yet. But I do, I do need to get that ordered, because it'll take about a month to get here. Great Bend's going to let me use their suit Friday night, we go up there, they got a guy who catches dogs up there, so one of the SO guys does a good job. But we need one for here, because it's something that we need to practice while we're here and keep the dog sharp on. So that's all I have. If anybody wants to volunteer, it only hurts for a while.
Number Marshall does.
You know, but...
I've already told him I'd do it.
I'll, I'll do it.
Got a good company that we can get it from.
With a bite suit, I watched, I watched that dog bite, there is no way I'm letting him get a hold of me without a suit on it.
But it is imperative, both for building searches and suspect apprehension and all of that, I mean, there's just equipment, and I've bought a lot of equipment out of my own pocket, just because we needed it, and I didn't have a choice, when, especially down there in Texas, there was just things that we needed, and you just, you can't. Unfortunately, we went down there just bald. I mean, we didn't have anything other than the cage in the back of the car, and that's it, so leashes wise, and, you know, I had one leash, and there was just, there's tracking lines and different things like that that you just got to get. You know, a bite suit, a bite suit lasts as long as you take care of it, you wash it and you, and you, you keep it out of the sun, you know, storing it and everything like that, those things will last a long time. It's not a, a one year and a dog tears it up. I mean, you'll have a bite suit for, for at least a good eight years, yeah, especially when we're only working one dog. You know, now if you're Wichita Police and, and that's catching five dogs every week, that puts a lot more wear and tear on it than, than just one dog does, so, I mean, it's, we're going to have it for a while. I just got to find somebody who wants it, so. I guess I'm just asking council if I can have permission that when I do find that, seeing where funding is. We do have a diversion fund, when we have money in there, it's whether or not we're trying to find out if we can use that diversion fund to buy it.
I think that's my discretion.
What I would like is, and that's what I'm saying, you know, if we can use it...
You can get anything you want.
You know, I would, ultimately, I would like that one of the other agencies gets that suit, but bottom line comes down is that we're going to have to get it, so I'm going to start working on that and trying to get them, we're trying to start that K9 fund up. We have a little bit in there, but we've got to get going on it.
There's one eBay for $395.
I don't care, because I'm not wearing it. I'm the handler. And I have a video I can show you of a smaller, a thin bite sleeve, and it hurts, so I will tell you that.
How much is it now?
From the Demet Company, I messaged him, and it's $1,480 for the suit, and that's the same suit that Signal K9 gets, and that's the best. It's a semi-comp suit, semi-competition suit, so it's thinner. That, it lets the dog actually feel the bite in you, instead of it being so bulky that the dog just bites the suit and it doesn't actually, because it stimulates the dog when he knows that he's getting his teeth into you, and that's why we work on the mouth and get him further up on the bite. So, a semi-comp suit doesn't hurt as bad, but it's a lot better for what we're doing. It's more realistic.
There's not any chance the sheriff's office would...
I'm going to work. I've gone on a couple things to a couple places, and I'm kind of not getting anywhere, so, but I'm going to work on that, because I would, I would rather that happen than us spend it, so, yeah.
When we get there, can we make sure to have, like, future paperwork of...
Yeah, oh, you know, and that was the bad thing is, is everything kind of came quick, and we were rushing, and we were going, and, and we're still sitting okay, we're doing fine, but there was just some things that we didn't get in stone writing beforehand, and it just, because it came up so fast.
Get the ball rolling.
Yeah, you know.
What's in that diversion fund?
So, do you want to be allowed $1,500 to get it here?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Does council need to approve that, since it's your fund?
I don't think so, I think, you know, I think I just...
I think that if we take out the diversion fund, it's...
So it's at John's discretion? Okay.
I've been used for training and that kind of stuff, but I don't ever use it at all.
The dope stuff doesn't cost us anything. I go to KHP, they give me all my narcotics. We'll store it and lock it up in upstairs, and that'll be our training for that, so. There's just a little bit more equipment that we need to buy. Muzzle, for one.
What's it cost your narcotics license?
It's waived, it's free of charge. Yeah, so. I have to have a state pharmaceutical license, and I have to have a DEA license.
That's about $750 annually, now.
Yeah, they're expensive, but we're waived because I'm a, I'm a trainer researcher, is a category I fall under, so.
You don't look at any more other, like, any other big purchases you don't see coming?
That's the biggest purchase we have. We should have the cage, didn't, so we kind of had a little bad mishap down in Texas, because the cage didn't get finished. The dogs are handler protection, too. The owner was pushing us around in front of the vehicles, and Baco got up on the door because the door wasn't finished, and we didn't have the window lock on, and he was rolling the window down, and he was coming, and nobody was in a bite suit to catch him, so the handler has to go catch him, and luckily, I did get bit, we got him back in the car, but then he started biting the door handle and trying to open the door, so we had to put the child lock on. So tomorrow, the door should be finished and the heat alarm system installed. We did get that in from the company in Missouri, so that should be in tomorrow, too.
So, I mean, that was, ended up being paid for that?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, to save part of that money.
So we did, we absolutely did. The bite suit is going to be our biggest purchase. There's some little stuff like muzzles that we need to buy. Everything else I pretty much have already bought myself, so we've got... Everything else I pretty much have already bought myself, so we've got it all. Just the bite suit's gonna be the big thing.
If they're gonna, if they're gonna pull it from the diversion fund, that's John's discretion, we don't have to approve it.
Well, I'll try and save the diversion fund. I want one of the others to get that for us, but worst case scenario, we do need to get that order. Soon somebody wants to volunteer.
I think Marshall did.
Email the date when we're gonna do that, I'm just like...
There'll be plenty of them that...
No participation, no participation.
Just make sure you're behind the scenes.
I'm gonna be able to pick up with the window up and the child locks on.
Okay, anybody have anything else for Chief Adams? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
What time is that on the twentieth?
Uh, one o'clock, I believe.
Chief, do you wanna go ahead and do your five-minute executive session now or to the end?
Sure, absolutely, if we, if we wanna do it now. That's up to you.
I was just gonna ask him about a pickup, I mean, still like first year.
Uh, no, no. So it was scheduled to be delivered December second, got pushed to December ninth. That's what it looks like it will be here. They're saying maybe around the fifteenth. We got all the stuff sent in today to get the bills so that we can get paid out of this year's budget and we don't have to try and mess with the whole carrying money over. I hadn't gotten an email back yet as of five thirty when I left, so I'll know first thing in the morning. But we should have it this month, so, but yeah, no. And all the equipment for the truck is in, so Tim has all of the equipment and we'll get it, get it done just as soon as it's in here.
Okay, I need a five-minute executive session for non-elected personnel.
Do all you want in there.
This, uh, this is gonna be for future, so since he was voted in, I'd like, I'd like him to be in it too.
And then everybody...
And then everybody can take it, yeah.
For five minutes?
Yeah.
Motion of second, all in favor? Motion carries. We'll resume at seven thirty-seven. Calls being back to order and needed additional five minutes executive session with the same people. A motion of second, all in favor? Motion carries. We'll resume at forty-two after. Call this meeting back to order. Okay, any more questions for Chief Adams? Okay, moving on. Fire Chief Michael...
And it was kind of an exec, executive session, but I'd like to do it exactly. I, I think I agree with Ross what he said then. If you guys are tired, take the time off. I mean, we do not twenty-four-seven...
I don't want Tori to feel overwhelmed the day after she graduates.
All of you need to take some time off. I mean, the number of rapes and murders and bank robberies is pretty static in Stafford County.
We've cut them down quite a bit.
Cut them down quite a bit. So take some time off.
And that's what we're trying, and yeah, that's why, you know, even for Thanksgiving, even though she's off for the week, they just gave everybody the two days off and I worked them because they need that time. And I know she's going five days a week out there and it's rough like school. She, and she's doing great, so, yeah, we'll get it figured out.
I couldn't agree with Jim more, yeah. It's imperative that you take the time off, both you and Officer Perez. Okay, all right, having no more questions, moving on to Fire Chief Michael Sanders.
I don't have anything.
All right. Okay, City Administrator Jamie.
I included an article about code enforcement for you guys to read. While I know it's in a bigger county and it might have more oil revenue than we do. I found it interesting and just kinda sparked the interest again of really needing someone that can do it with more time and effort. I mean, I've been trying to do what I can do, but I'm not out. And it's hard enough for me to take the time off that I need to take off. And not be in the office, taking time out to go do code enforcement is on top of, I mean, it's just, it's a lot. So I'm gonna start looking into a couple people here in town that I think would be a good fit and then looking at the possibility of even finding someone from out of town. But I want it to be cost-effective too, and that's why I was gonna start in town. But I just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention and Brian had sent it to me and I thought it would, it's... I mean, I, I feel like John said, had said, we've made more progress here in the last couple years with things around town. And we have to continue because this, it's, a lot of small communities are becoming transient communities and it just brings in that type, and if we keep our, our stuff where it needs to be, then hopefully we can keep a cap on some of that too.
I talked to Jamie about it. I got my packet yesterday and my opinion on it is to have an outside source come in. Just because they have no ties here, you don't have to worry about they, them picking on you for whatever reason. I'd like for her to at least check into it and see what that cost would be over having somebody in town.
If you start enforcing codes and have strict codes, you're gonna make Adams' job a lot easier. Cuz you were mentioning, just a private conversation here about buildings that are dilapidated, propped up, and the people that are by them just create more problems. So if you clean up the codes, you're gonna make everybody's jobs easier. And enforcing the codes, and I don't know who you get to enforce them, but John could speak to it better than I, but if it's visible from the street, it's an obvious violation. I don't know if you're going to invite, was it Fourth Amendment, Search and Caesars?
You can't, you can't go onto the property unless you're invited onto the property.
I, I can't.
Or until you get, unless you get court order.
You get a court order.
You still, and we once had to get a court order. I can't remember what house it was.
But if you can see the roof caving in or something like that from the street, it's gonna be pretty obvious.
I'll just say that, you know, I mean, I don't know if anybody at the table here has left town, but I would say that me leaving town and then coming back twenty-five years later, I see the huge difference of what it was in ninety-three when I left to what it is now. And, and it's disheartening, it really is. When I drive up and down the streets and, and maybe if you're living here, you don't notice it cuz it's just kinda slowly. But when I left, it was all in Mr. Blythe's yard and the houses looked like, and, and it was really a nice, gorgeous town. And, and it just seems like it's just kinda gone down. And I agree, we're, we're moving in, you know, we're starting to get some problems and, and all of that, and I, you know, it's that broken window effect that we teach in law enforcement that, you know, when, when something starts looking shady, that's what you're gonna get then as a result, is shady. And I agree, I think, I think we need to really enforce the codes and, and clean up the town because it's, it's really just disheartening to me driving up and down the streets to see how it's gone. It's really different now, so.
I think you'd make the cost high enough that those people that don't not keep it up, that they're either forced to tear them down or to give them up, whether...
That's why I said, you know, like on the mowings, when it was cheaper for us just to mow them and send them a bill or apply it to their taxes, they just paid it.
It said right on this deal that, the guy said it's just cheaper for you guys to mow it than to hire somebody.
Yeah, and I'll say that I'm not certain what they're doing is legal on the mowing stuff, cuz I think it's statutory provision. I meant to look at that before. I knew there was something in that article that was fishy, but I meant to look at that before I came in.
But they were charging too much?
I think they were, they were. I mean, it, it's just kinda court costs, there's like a balance there between when is something illegal and when is it...
So you're saying you're gonna look into it to see what's the most we can charge for violations, your violations, is that what you're doing?
I can, I'm saying I meant to and forgot to.
I think that's what we need, isn't it?
Because if we can charge them four hundred dollars a time plus minimum hourly wages?
Cuz there's things that are, that go into that that you're not even considering besides the fact that you're paying somebody is their health insurance, maintenance of their mower, insurance of the mower, you know, stuff that's not prepared with the mower. That a lot of stuff isn't contemplated when you, when you create that...
Certified letters, yeah.
I'd say look into it and see what's the most we can change that to.
I guarantee you it costs us more to mow somebody's lawn than we think it does.
Oh, yeah.
It's like anytime...
Tears the shit out of the equipment.
John, dear mechanic pulls up and opens his door, what's it cost you?
A lot.
Yeah, just when he opens his door.
Tire guy.
Yeah, or the tire guy, it worked.
Those are cheap.
It's a hundred dollars an hour. And then I put on an administrative fee for the paperwork.
Minimum, any minimums? Minimum, like a minimum hour or anything?
I think they charge an hour minimum, for sure.
I mean, you don't have to, you just drive, like Adam says, you drive down the streets and look at the roofs of houses. How many roofs are caving in or leak, you know, and you drive by, you know they're leaking.
Missing windows.
Yeah, walk around the square, there's bricks coming off some buildings on the square. You look inside, you can see the ceiling caving down inside, so you know the roof is leaking.
Some of that goes to building inspector.
Yeah, and all of my two cents is, is, and it blows my mind, some of the conditions that people are willing to live in. And, and sometimes I think they just need a little bit of help, and that would, you know, help with a roof or help with replacement of a window, that kinda thing would go a long ways, and I don't know how you do that, but I don't know what the solution is if the city's not going to... Some of the houses can probably be saved that, that would go down that, that route where you can't literally order, they'd be torn down, but regardless of what kind of damage, against an municipal court, I'm not sure it makes any progress either.
And we're dealing with...
We're dealing with one right now.
Well, this community that, in the, we played a lot of sports up there and it's a pretty neat community. It's pretty well cleaned up. It's probably because of oil and stuff, it might have more money, but it's pretty well cleaned up.
I mean, part of it, in, in my opinion, and maybe I look at it wrong, but it's the sense of community as well. It's neighbors, helping neighbors, and yeah, they might have more oil money, but I mean, the sense of pride everywhere is gone. People don't have pride in their work, people don't have pride in their houses, people don't, I mean, it's just the sad truth.
And, and the pride shows in the school. If you've ever played athletics up there, there's a lot of pride in that school. A lot of championships, you know, there's various different things that shows in that community, and there's, carries over.
Does council have any problems with allowing Jamie to look for someone outside of this community to perhaps be the code enforcement?
I'm looking in town first and then if you can find...
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll bring everything to the table.
The only thing I'd say against that is that when you hire somebody local, they have their prejudices. Could you get somebody out of town?
Some, some people don't care though.
I have one in mind, I haven't got ahold of her yet.
I've got one in mind that probably isn't gonna care what people think. I'm pretty sure she don't care who you are or what you think.
My thing with, my thing with that is you have a, you know, she has ties to the community, she, her heart's here, she's not going anywhere, like...
Exactly.
So, but I, I have reached out to another person, I haven't, I haven't got ahold of, of the other ones I wanted to talk to, but...
Does this person tend to call a spade a bloody shovel?
I don't know. I can't say that I know that answer.
All right, Jamie, you have anything else?
Um, Christmas round square is Sunday, four to seven. If you guys want to, you can volunteer to work at the Dillon's Building. Yeah, you're taken.
I'm all right.
I have volunteers, but if you guys would like to get out there and be a part of it, I will be happily, happy to find something, something for you to do. They put the tree in the fountain today, so that's near this year.
What?
That's the new fountain.
Yeah, there's been some funny comments about that.
Surprise. It's definitely not how I envisioned it, but we're gonna, we're gonna work around it.
Just tell them we're gonna keep it like that.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. Christmas decorations...
Don't do that.
I guess aren't, I can't keep it. We're gonna water it.
We'll get used to it.
Change is good.
All right. Anything else, Jamie?
I don't think so.
Okay, moving on. City Attorney John. Okay, anybody got any questions for John? All right, moving on to old business. Does anybody have any questions regarding anything on that list?
No date on the delivery and the pickup.
So I called again today and I talked to Jeff. He put the order in with G M and he told me that basically he puts the order in and then G M like picks up the order like a couple times a month. However, that, and then as soon as they get it, he'll get it back on his computer and he'll send what he gets back. But he can't say that they've picked it up because he hasn't got anything yet, so.
He didn't give you a date, it could be two thousand...
He won't know until G M picks a truck and gives him confirmation of when he'll get it.
Like he's turned everything in on his, on his side, so.
We'll have to do it next year.
Any other comments or questions regarding anything on the list?
Just the Witsun, we got the quote for...
Yeah, it's over the quote. So the main floor, I told you guys, I was just gonna try to pick something to get it going. And he sent over a couple pictures this evening or this afternoon. And we talked, him and I talked about doing the, I don't know what they're called, like the square carpets where it's not just one big sheet.
Carpet tiles.
Like the carpet tiles, so replacement would be a little bit easier. So he sent over a couple and I just picked out like a dark one that looks like it not shows a lot of stains. I think that's the one I, is that the crisscrossy?
So why did you guys decide on not the squares?
We did pick, I picked the squares.
This is for the main floor.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do.
It'd be squares.
She made that decision.
It's a good idea for spills and stuff.
And then I figured like that would help the high traffic area too, yeah. I picked that one and then above it, like the darkest, the right top, I think. It's like that dark charcoal-y.
It's that one?
Mm-hmm, blackish.
Oh, so it's actually this design, but it's that black color? That black color.
It's black, black.
It's darker, and then that'll keep away the yuck, so, so that's what you're seeing.
Some of the yuck, you know, if you look what he has in mind, you know, he's gotta have a good idea what's gonna be best in there.
Yeah.
Color-wise.
I mean, at this point, it's been going on for six months.
What's this price, Jamie?
The carpet for the skating rink. Like that is all over this. And then your grand total's on the back.
The grand total's twenty-five thousand eight hundred sixty.
And I have not turned this to the rent, so I would give this, I'll send it to Trey tonight. I mean, I told him I would get it to them when I got it, so we'll see what they say and...
I think we've dealt with it long enough. I think it's time we make a decision to either accept this bid and pay for it and if they reimburse us, fine. If not, I honestly think they're on their way out, but that's just my opinion.
That's what I've been hearing.
Have they had a meeting already?
Yeah, it said right in the meeting that they were discussing it in another building, so.
But then, I thought we were gonna, or you were gonna talk to them about what they could help with, so...
They won't give her an answer. They won't give her an answer.
They wanted the final bid.
So I have priority list to do this.
I mean, you're asking for two thousand dollars and how many years of free rent? But whatever.
Yesterday's yesterday.
I'd make a motion to approve it. I think he did great work and it's the only bid we have.
Where are we gonna, where are we gonna take one of them?
Um, we have, what did I say?
Wasn't it the...
My suggestion is that we take ten... My suggestion is, is that we take ten thousand out of the Wits Center Fund and the rest out of the one percent sales tax. I don't think we deplete the whole fourteen thousand out of Wits Center. That's just what I was gonna say.
Did we get that corrected where the rent that the rec is currently paying is going in the Wits Center Fund now?
Is that a motion, Marshall?
Yeah, I, I mean, Isai made the motion. I just, so that's what I would recommend we do.
So we're doing fif-
Fifteen eight sixty.
Eight sixty out of one percent.
And ten thousand out of the Wits Center Fund.
Time frame for this, Jamie?
For Ben?
Yes.
He couldn't give me a timeframe until we accepted. He, when I asked him about a timeframe, he said that right now is okay, but he had a couple of bids in for a couple of bigger projects. So.
The sooner he would've got back with them, the sooner he would've done it.
I don't know that he's got those bigger projects, but, I mean, he's worked very hard at getting, like, I mean, he sent this, to, him and I were working on it today. And so he got everything to us. So I don't think he'll put us on the back burner, but as soon as I talk to him, I can message him after.
Do you have a second on the?
We have a motion, but not a second.
Second.
He made a motion and then Marshall made. It's really Marshall's motion. Because it, redo the motion.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we accept the bid from CTS for the rec commission repairs in the amount of twenty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars with ten thousand coming out of the Wits Center Fund and fifteen thousand eight sixty coming out of the one percent sales tax.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Keep us in the loop on the timeframe?
Yeah. Yep, I'll message him after we're done here and get it to you guys.
Okay, is there any more discussion on any topics underneath old business? Okay, is there new business? All right, we have an executive session in ten minutes.
To, to everybody at the table and Kyle.
Okay. I have a motion on table and I have a second. Okay, motion and second, all in favor? Motion carries. We'll resume at eight thirteen. Executive session for twenty minutes.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. We'll resume at, uh, at eight thirty-three. I said, uh, one last, uh, executive session for five minutes.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Eight thirty-eight?
Uh, eight forty. We'll resume at eight forty. Call the meeting back to order. You want to do counsel?
Do you need a motion for that?
No. How about I figure it out and I'll get ahold of you guys?
That works for me.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I can find out when, when is best.
She, we've always, counsel's always allowed her to make decisions about special meetings.
Okay. It's your discretion when you wanna do a special meeting then. You okay with that?
Counsel? Okay, actions?
Earliest convenient time.
Okay. Okay. Uh, having no more business, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
And you're pretty dedicated.
Second.
Why?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
All people who need to be here.
Motion carries.
We were just talking, I'm sure you're allowed to come again.